Okay, okay. We're going to make a change to the agenda right now. Because we have the retirees here and our teachers, what we'd like to do is do their presentation prior to us having to go into non-public. So do we need to make a motion for that?
The board would have to entertain changing the agenda.
Would you, would someone make a motion on that?
To change the agenda.
Elizabeth makes the motion. Elizabeth McKinney makes the motion and Gary seconds the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. We will be doing the presentation right now for our retirees. It's with a heavy heart. Susan, I'll let you take over.
So there's a tradition when our employees retire in the district that the school board invites them to a meeting and we present them with a token of our appreciation and we share with the public a few words about their service here. We have four retirees this year: Doug Webb, Pat Jaeger, Julie Cooper, and Lisa Cole. And Doug Webb and Pat Jaeger will not be able to join us, but I will present them with theirs on behalf of the board. Tomorrow we have an end-of-year staff picnic.
Oh, great.
And I will provide the, I will share that with them at this time. So I, but I will share a few comments on each, but I will start with Julie Cooper and Lisa as they're here. So Julie started at the elementary school in 1995 and she's been a preschool teacher for us for that entire time. She played a huge part in expanding our preschool program and she has completed 26 years of service at the end of this year.
Oh my gosh.
We will remember Julie for her strong advocacy for all children's school program and we thank her very much for her service to our.
On behalf of everyone here at the school board, we are so pleased with everything you've done and congratulations for everything. We wish you all the best in the next chapter. So congratulations.
Next is Lisa Cole. She started in 1985, word on the street, at our elementary school as a reading instructor. She has completed her 35th year. Did I get it right? 34?
36.
36 year. I've gotten her wrong every time. 34, 36, 35. 36 years of service here in our school district. Lisa is going to miss by all. She is the heart and soul of this elementary school, according to her colleagues.
That's all you hear.
She always goes above and beyond and she plays an integral part in helping to create a positive culture and climate for our students and staff. So on behalf of the school district, we would like to offer you.
And Lisa, on behalf of everyone here, past and present, thank you so much. It has been an absolute pleasure having you and good luck on your next chapter.
Thank you.
So I will make a few comments about Pat Jaeger and Doug Webb. Although they aren't here, I will give them their present tomorrow. So Doug started in 1992 at the elementary school. He's worked in the fourth grade, the fifth grade, and then he moved up to the middle school where he has been for the last five years. So Doug has served us for 29 years as a teacher in the two schools and, you know, he will be missed by all of us. He has been a strong advocate for students and he's been a leader among his peers and he will be sorely missed, but we're delighted to support him in his transition. So I.
Doug, thank you so very much, the school board, past and present. You've been a huge input to all of the students here in our town and we can't thank you enough. So congratulations and best of luck.
And Pat Jaeger started here in 2000. She began in the middle school and transitioned to the high school in 2018. Pat will, has finished her 21st year as of tomorrow, working in our special education department. Pat has always been super flexible and accommodating to both students and, and the district and she will be missed by many as well. So we thank her for her service to our school district.
And Pat from the school board, past and present, the things that you've done with the children in our districts with special education and everyone is something that we are eternally grateful for and we thank you so very, very much and good luck on your next chapter.
So thank you for being here to support.
Thank you so much for coming.
Such an amazing staff. Thank you.
Thank you. See you later. Bye.
Have a good night. See you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow. At this time, next on our agenda, we're supposed to go into our non-public session to discuss matters that may be considered under New Hampshire RSA 91A 32A. I seek a motion to enter into non-public session.
So I have to make a comment. We have other parents that have decisions that have to run to their child's graduation, so if I don't let the public make a motion to let that, I'll look on it first before we go into private sessions when the actions are discussed. That would be so efficient.
I'm fine with it. Um, I make, you good with that too? Okay. Yeah, we can do that, sure. Thank you for your, your, bringing it up. Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to move the public comment up.
Perfect. Motion by Mr. Hammacher and seconded by Ms. McKinney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, great. We're going to go right now to public comment if there's anyone that would like to come up and speak.
I'm Rachel Willer. I live at 26 Miles Drive. Thank you very much for moving to the meeting, moving this stuff. I'd like to begin by reading an email that my husband, Mike, sent to Susan on Monday. This is his email. "I wanted to relay to you an experience I had over the weekend that highlighted the need for me to reach out and speak up on behalf of our students. Our son Graham in eighth grade participated in a two-day baseball tournament in Massachusetts where there were over 40 baseball teams from all across the New England region. Due to a family conflict, he stayed with some friends overnight at a hotel. When I picked him up on Sunday after his final game, I asked him how his day was. I was expecting the standard one-word answer, 'good,' but instead I heard Dad. 'Dad, it was so nice not to have to wear a mask for the whole weekend. I didn't even have to think about it.' Then he asked me, 'Why do Newmarket students have to wear masks when restaurants, hotels, and stores in Massachusetts don't require it? I thought Massachusetts was more strict than New Hampshire was smarter. I can't tell you how both happy and at the same time sad I felt by this exchange.' Happy to hear he had a taste of what it's like not to have to worry about masking, to have his freedoms, even at the most basic level to breathe without a mask. I was terribly sad to know he's returning to school this week where he will be forced to wear a mask. It's like our students are returning to jail after weekend furlough. I'm asking you and the school board to stop the mask mandate immediately. Not only is it not necessary, law of practically nonexistent COVID cases in Newmarket, large portion of the population vaccinated, one week left of school. It's embarrassing and ridiculous that our SAU continues to follow these protocols that have been abandoned as unneeded for the majority of our country. It is these types of restrictive policies, masks, caging our eighth graders in the same classroom for entire school days, canceling middle school sports, et cetera, that have resulted in our children who are on honor roll, active participants in athletics, mostly enthusiastic to do their homework and go to school on a daily basis, to tell their parents they can't stand going to school. I love our town. I've loved our school district in the years past. We have four children, but I'm deeply disappointed in the overarching restrictions you have placed on our kids this past year. We are the live-free-or-die state. This is not just a motto, it's a way of life. I can't stress enough how embarrassed I am when other towns and now states have less restrictions than our beautiful little SAU. Stop the mask mandate. Allow our students and parents to make their own choice. I realize my ask to discuss this last week in person wasn't manageable due to your busy schedule, but I feel this is urgent enough where we need to have a conversation in person or over the phone ASAP so we can work together to remove the school mask mandate for this last week of school and the upcoming school year. I'm happy to arrange, rearrange my schedule to accommodate an in-person or over-the-phone meeting. Please let me know. Thank you, Mike." This is still his email. "P.S. Rachel and I chose to remove Rosie, now in fifth grade, from Newmarket schools solely, solely due to the restrictive policies and are now considering removing Graham as well. Difficult decision as we love our town, but you are making a school environment that's not fun nor conducive to learning. Several times, both Anna in 11th grade and Graham have commented how distracting masks have become and turning the children off of what a positive learning experience has been and can be. Don't waste an opportunity to make the last week of school more enjoyable for these kids." That's the end of his email. That was never answered. His email was never answered. It is quite honestly shocking to me that an email like this, which was not aggressive in nature, would be ignored as well as his request to meet and discuss this important issue. Susan, if you wonder why our community is losing faith and trust in you, this is why. As I hope all of you are aware, the school board, updated guidance came out from New Hampshire Department of Public Health Services yesterday saying we want, saying quote, "We want schools and childcare agencies to be free to choose to remove face mask requirements indoors based on your assessment of the local situation and risk benefit of continued mask use." Also quote, "We suggest you can safely choose to remove face mask requirements indoors regardless of a person's vaccination status." vaccination status." I believe this is the guidance you were waiting on, and I hope that this makes a difference. I know there's only one day left of school, but that one day without a mask would be heaven for these kids who've been following this unnecessary rule for so long. Please, someone on the board, make a motion to vote to repeal the mask mandate for tomorrow. I know it's one day, and in next year's planning, it would be appropriate to make masks optional. Thank you.
Do I have to state my name and address? Should I just hold this? Is it on? Hello? You can't hear me? It is good? Okay. Okay, you can hear. Okay. Great. Awesome. My name is Oksana Hauschel. I live at 146 Ashwamp Road. First, I would like to say thank you to my son for allowing me to come here at the risk of being late for his eighth-grade graduation. I'm here to tell you, Dr. Givens, and the members of the Newmarket School Board, that you all are complacent and responsible for the clear and present emotional, mental infliction upon the kids in the community under your authoritarian leadership and mask requirement policies. And when I say authoritarian, I don't mean it lightly. It is an accurate representation of the style of leadership you exhibit. You all sit there behind the shields of your name plaque, which you don't have today, but you usually do, and on the backs of the parents who elected you to represent us, assuring us that you will not only hear, but listen to our thoughts and concerns regarding our children. However, from my viewpoint, not only did you fail to listen to us, your direct inactions have failed the children you were elected to guide and protect. Instead, you cowered behind the words dictated to you by state and national health guidelines. Did you hear me? Guidelines. In no way, shape, form, or meaning does guideline translate into must-haves, must-dos, and punishable if not adhered to. With many of the staff vaccinated, the lifting of the state of emergency status, the lack of scientific evidence of the efficacy of masks, and the rising number of depression in our schoolchildren, one would think that you, the school board and superintendent, would reevaluate the mask policies for our very young children and young adults in our schools. How you were able to sit in your air-conditioned offices during the hottest days of the school year while our kids were nearly suffocated in the oppressive and classroom environment is beyond comprehension, beyond good conscience. I'd like to share with you all of the various reasons I have heard for keeping masks on our children. They're kids. They're resilient. They'll bounce back. It's the polite thing to do. It's for the safety and health of everyone. But they can ask their teachers if they need a mask break any time. Oh, we have installed fans in some of the classrooms. We worked all weekend to cool down the school in preparation for the coming week. Well, we are following CDC and NHHS guidelines. We are following the science. Well, there's only eight more days of school. They can tough it out. And I ask you now, tough what out? Heat exhaustion? Most of the staff are vaccinated. Shouldn't that be their protection? Many of the students are vaccinated. Aren't they protected? They can ask their teacher permission to breathe fresh oxygen? How does that not sound ridiculous and absurd to any sane and humane person? Bounce back from what exactly? Do you mean bounce back from the trauma, stress, anxiety, and fear that they've experienced because of your draconian policies? From the feeling of isolation as a result of bouncing back and forth between remote and in-person? And mind you, attending school in person but required to sit in a plexiglass cubicle is still very isolating. There was a story I will always remember as a child in sixth grade. You remember sixth grade? We were also very impressionable, and the one thing that was always drilled into our developing psyche was this: Do not conform. Do not be a follower. Be a leader. Well, that book, I believe it was called The Lemming Condition, and of course, you know how that story goes. We all do. So when I hear a group of people, educated people, who refuse to do their own research and instead refer to health agencies who profit off of our tax dollars with unfounded data and say they are following the science, all I can think of is this, and I really do regret saying it, but here I am. What you're doing is acting like a lemming, and you're taking our kids with you, and I'm not okay. So please share with us what science you are following, and please, for the love of God, do not say, "I can find it on the website of the CDC, the WHO, the NAIAD, NIH, NHHS," because none of them will tell me that their guidelines are proof positive that our children need to be treated like disease vectors and walking, talking virus transmitters that require masks in school to keep the sick and elderly safe. One hour on the internet will reveal to you that historical uses of masks in previous pandemics did nothing to stop the spread. You may even research the toxicity of drugstore fiber masks with a few minutes of spare in that hour. The decisions made by you, Dr. Givens, is all about control and a lack of true leadership during a time when you could have put your critically thinking cap on and based your decisions from a comprehensive look at the data involving our students in our small town. You could have made a decision that allowed parents to choose for the children whether or not they needed to wear masks. And so, no, I don't think many of these childrens can or ever will bounce back from this year the way you're hoping and praying that they do. What you all did by masking our children, scolding them for pulling them down for, prohibiting their movements in the classroom, making them sit behind plexiglass with masks on, yes to sports, no to sports, wear a mask with a mouth hole for your instruments, this but not that, here but not there, not now but maybe later, like, wait, what? Are you living in a clown world? A Dr. Seuss book? No, because it can't be a Dr. Seuss book. That was canceled last year. Thank you, cancel culture. Our tax dollars have been lining your pockets, Dr. Givens, and the gratitude we ever get from you is more unanswered questions, unanswered emails, unreturned phone calls. Not only have we been lining your pockets, we line the pockets of your assistants and secretaries, who are fantastic at doing your bidding. And somehow, you still go about your business as though you are the boss of us, the parents and tax-paying residents of this town. No, you're not the boss of us. You work for us, and we are your bosses. Correct me if I'm wrong, but in the normal world of employees and bosses, when an employee fails to do a satisfactory job in the eyes of the boss, he or she gets fired. We also elect members of the school board to be the voice of the community and to keep the superintendent in check. But when they don't, they have to answer to us, the voters and taxpayers. I have to ask this. How many nurses and doctors do you think will say they have seen an unprecedented number of student COVID cases in their offices and clinics that warrant serious health interventions? I'm guessing not very many. Actually, doctors and nurses are saying that they are indeed worried about the number of children being admitted into the ER and local clinics. Yes, the numbers are staggering. The statistics show this. The diagnosis? Depression. Suicidal thoughts, anxiety, fear, stress, trauma. Not due to COVID, but because of COVID, because of the continual lockdowns, the pressure and stress of face masks, the uncertainty of what the rest of their childhood is going to look like. This is all on you. Their scars have your name written all over them. There should be no doubt in your mind that masking students for the 2021, 2022 school year be wiped off the slate forever. Your days of making unchecked policy decisions that continually violate the basic human rights of our children are over. This pandemic is over. The masking of children is over, and the fear mongering is over. And if the members of this board have a job to do, it is to finally listen to us, the constituents that they represent, and say that you are also over. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Joanie Felix, and I live at 187 Grant Road. What these ladies have said pretty much sums it up. I was hoping, as they were, that the kids would be able to end the school year without masks on their faces or sitting behind plexiglass. I really do hope that you could have their last day of school without masks on. That would mean so much to these children that have been through so much over this past 15 months with the pandemic and everything going on in their lives. I know you go by the CDC guidelines. I know that you repeatedly tell us that when it comes to children wearing masks, that's what you go by. But the guidelines are just that. They're recommendations. They're not requirements. The school board has the power to end the masking, and you guys were given the power when you were voted in to serve our community and care for the needs of the children. I'm not going to go through the statistics of COVID cases or the dangers of wearing a mask. You guys know that information. You know that they've had to wear the masks through the heat. I kept my own child home so she wouldn't have to sit in class in 90-degree heat with a sweating, not able to take a drink of water without being scared that she's going to get in trouble. She was getting text messages from her friends that there are no air conditioners in the classrooms. There's an air conditioner every other classroom. There's a fan every other classroom. That's not even pointed at them. The children were so hot in school. But I was glad I kept her home and made that decision to do that. She was glad I kept her home, because when she went to school on Wednesday of that week, the classrooms were still very hot. My daughter has suffered because of this mask mandate. I could see it with my own eyes. She hasn't suffered through sickness, but she has suffered emotionally. A lot of kids have suffered emotionally and psychologically. I could see the damage. She talks about the plexiglass, sitting behind that plexiglass. They were watching a movie in class, and she said it was hard to see the movie through the plexiglass. Can you imagine being a child sitting in a classroom, not being able to see the screen because of plexiglass, which really doesn't do much because air flows over and around the plexiglass? We're at the point now where we're counting which schools still have masks, not ones that have let them go. I'm embarrassed. I'm embarrassed that we still have a mask mandate in place, but our children are still wearing masks to school. It's time to move forward and let the kids breathe freely. You're all well-educated. You're all able to think for yourselves. I know that you're able to. I just wish that you had set aside your fear and used common sense. There's no need for the kids to keep wearing masks. We should have let the mandate go weeks ago. There are so many other schools in the state of New Hampshire that let the mandate go weeks ago, and we should have done the same thing. I'm asking for you to let the 21, 22 school year start out with the children not wearing masks. It's so important for their psychological health, for their emotional health. They just need to be able to see their friends' faces, to be able to laugh and socialize. My daughter has sat through the school year with a mask on her face, pulling it down only to eat lunch. She was scolded by a teacher's aide for taking her mask off because she was done eating her lunch. She was scared. She was scared she's going to get in trouble. She's scared now she's going to get in trouble for not wearing a mask in a grocery store. This has done so much damage to our children. We need to end it now. My question is about the town hall meeting on Monday. I'm wondering why it's being held through Zoom. It's a very important meeting, and I'm sure the mask mandate is going to come up for next year. I'm asking that you change the meeting to in-person. We're all here right now, in person, in this room. There's no reason to hold another Zoom meeting. We've had so many Zoom meetings. I think that it would be reasonable to request that that town hall meeting be held in-person. So, school board and superintendent, I'm asking you to end the mask mandate for next year, to do what's right. We do have updated data. I know you guys love the data from the CDC. So the data from the COVID-19 school dashboard was updated. They're suggesting, the New Hampshire DPHS is suggesting that schools safely choose to remove face mask requirements indoors regardless of a person's vaccination status. The New Hampshire Department of Education, just on June 9th, has implemented policies that support student learning and overall health. The New Hampshire Division of Public Health said that as we enter the summer months, it's becoming more difficult for people to wear masks in settings that lack climate control. Like I said earlier, the children were in rooms that had no air circulation and 90-plus degrees with a mask over their face. It's not fair to them. When the office staff have air conditioner, it's not fair when there's nothing they can do about it. They don't have this choice. They're being put under the control of the decisions made by the school board and the superintendent to keep a mask over their face. They should be able to breathe freely, and the Department of Education is even agreeing with that. I don't know why you're not going along with these requirements when you so repeatedly tell us you're going by the CDC statistics. I just ask that you rethink the decisions and surprise the kids for tomorrow. Let them go on the last day of school mask. Let them see their friends' faces before summer starts. Let them have time to socialize with their friends without a mask over their face. I can't even see you guys' faces. I wish I could. I know many of you. I wish I could see your faces. So I hope the kids on the last day of school can go mask-free, and I really, really implore you to start the fresh school year with the children mask-free. Thank you.
I just want to make sure everybody was done. So, good evening. My name is Anne Marie Banfield. I'm a parental rights advocate in New Hampshire. I do live in Northampton, but I want you to know that I was contacted by parents in this district who asked me to speak on their behalf. Maybe they couldn't make it. There were a few. I want to first thank you for your undivided attention to these parents tonight. I've been to other school board meetings. I've spoken at them, and I've seen people on their phones. And, you know, sometimes that's important, but I think what you displayed here tonight is a great deal of grace and courtesy to them, so I just want to say thank you for that. Also want to say thank you for allowing me to speak on some of your parents' behalf. I don't speak for all of them, but I do speak for some of them. I want to first say that in my own family, we have somebody who is immune suppressed. I understand this better than a lot of people, a lot of people. For 10 years, we have dealt with this. We have dealt with it with some of the top doctors in the country, getting advice on how to deal with it. We have been that family on the plane, only wearing masks. Never once asked anybody else to wear one, though. We took care of ourselves. So we have a great deal of respect for those who choose to wear one, those who want one on their children, but also those who do not. And I think it's important to make sure that we are respecting the role of parents in this situation. As a parental rights advocate, also focused on academic excellence and parental rights for these parents, I've spoken to many administrators in the last 10 years doing my advocacy work, and I came across one principal along the way. He was in private school, but he said, "You know, Anne Marie, if somebody comes to me with one complaint, I kind of log it, kind of make note of it. But if, you know, three or five more come to me, I know I have to take action. I know I have to listen. I know I have to find a solution for everybody." And I think the solution is, is to find a happy medium. And I think what they're requesting is logical, factual. There's no reason not to afford that right, really. They have the right. It should be their decision. So in Exeter a couple nights ago, when I attended that meeting, the board did take a vote on whether to stop the mask mandate. a vote on whether to stop the mask mandate. They had one day of school left and the board did vote in removing the masks, meaning that your child can wear them or they may not. It was a parental decision. And so, they did afford that right to back to the parents. So, the next day, the students came to school and 99, roughly, I mean, obviously this is anecdotal, about 99% of the kids were not wearing masks. That's-
I was there.
Okay. So, would you guess then?
Fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty. Because I mean, as a parental rights advocate, I can tell you, I heard from a lot of parents that a lot of kids-
I saw it.
Okay, okay, all right. But I think it does speak volumes that, you know, if parents want them, you would think a vast majority. And so, even if it's 50-50, let's just say, the vast majority would have them on. So, 50%. And I, you know, I don't want to get into those details, but I think it does speak volumes if there's half of them that don't want the mask on. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention and just let you know that this is what's going on in the state of New Hampshire. I sense that if these are mandated in the fall, you're going to see a lot more people, a lot more barking, a lot more anger. And what I think we would like to see is some unity, some unity in the community because right now, a lot of people are divided. They were divided over the school closings. They're now divided over this. And I think there's ways that administrators can bring people together. And one way is to find a happy medium. I respect all of your decision tonight to wear a mask. I respect and support any parent who wants their children to wear masks because they might be in my position and they might think, you know, I need to have them wear a mask. That's something that's, you know, that's pro-parent, too. So, I just ask you to consider that tonight if you want to make a motion. I think somebody suggested it back here, to end it. One last day would be nice, but in the future, I do think that this is going to become an even more important issue. And I just thank you for your consideration and for listening to me. So, I'm very much appreciative of that.
Is there anyone else for public comment? I want to thank you all. We listened and your opinions matter to us, so I truly appreciate that you took the time to come here. Looks like we should close out public comment at-
Wasn't there a man that asked you to read?
Not that I have. Not that I have. So, is it now time for us to go into non-public? I would like someone to make a motion to enter non-public session to discuss matters that may be considered under RSA 91A 32A. Seconded, a motion made by Elizabeth McKinney, seconded by Gary Swanson. I'll do the roll call on that. Elizabeth McKinney?
Aye.
Andrew Hemmiker?
Aye.
Gary Swanson?
Heather Durant, aye.
We now move into public session. Thank you, non-public session. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we're returning to- Going to double-check. Great. Welcome back, everyone. We are rejoining our regular meeting. We have some action items that we need to look at. Okay, great. Let's see, someone else here. Do you want to look at the minutes?
No, you can send them down.
There you go. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second.
Second by Andrew Hemmiker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval passes. Do you want us to- First before Jana? Okay, great.
Sorry, it's to a point of order. We should excuse Chair Shelton.
Yes. Want to make note that chairperson Kim Shelton is excused from this meeting. We want to make note on that. There will be four board members here today to be voting on items. We want to take a look at the minutes from our regularly scheduled meeting of June 3, Could I have a motion to enter the minutes for June 3, 2021?
Second.
Second. We have a motion by Elizabeth McKinney and a second by Gary Swanson. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I don't know if we can amend the minutes, but we should excuse chairperson Shelton from the last meeting as well.
Yes, absolutely. Forgive me, I did not, in the beginning of the June 3, 2021 meeting, make the notifications that Chairwoman Kim Shelton would not be attending our June 3 meeting. So, we do want to make the notes to refer to that. She would be absent from the June 3, 2021 meeting.
And then, just notice that on the item 2B, approved manifest, it was a 4-0, not a 5-0 vote. And the same for item D.
Excellent.
Poetry Out Loud would be a 4-0, not 5-0.
4-0. Yes, my error. Thank you so much. Same will be. Okay, great. Any other discussion on the minutes? Okay, none being said. Do we need to remake a motion or do we just-
No, just vote.
Wonderful. All those in favor of approving June 3 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is the bids and RFPs for filing cabinets and custodial services. Jana, thank you so much. Is that better?
Yeah, just do a quick overview again.
Sorry. So, after evaluating all the bids, we recommend that the New Market School Board award the bid to WB Mason for 12 fireproof file cabinets at a total price of $20,372.40.
So, these are in addition to any filing cabinets we have and not replacements?
Correct. Would you like me to do both bids at- Yeah, let's do that. That would be great. Okay. Sometimes it's easier that way. Yeah. The second bid has to do with custodial services going into fiscal year 2022. At a previous meeting, I spoke to you about our transition plan for facilities because our facilities director is leaving and we felt it was really important to maintain a high level of, a high standard of cleanliness while we transition to a new person and allow ourselves some time to determine our staffing, which is another project. So, we had asked for bids to, for custodial services, for six individuals to come for about a six-month period as needed. We would be billed as needed. We would not pay for the services if they're not delivered, but it would allow us that flexibility to staff up and make sure that our facilities are maintained as we need. So, we recommend, we only have one bid. We recommend that the New Market School Board award the bid to Citywide Facility Solutions for an estimated total amount, and again, it's based on what we think we might need, of $168,480. And where are they located? They are located out of Manchester, I believe. They serve several other school districts in the area, kind of in the same capacity. Okay, good. Yeah, I was going to ask that.
And just to remind, we are, we have, we're understaffed about six positions right now. So, the money for this is actually in the salary lines.
Okay.
But this would be in the non-salary accounts. So, it's not a new expenditure. It's just spending the money in a different way.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for me or? No discussion? I'd seek a motion to accept the file cabinet bid vendor to WB Mason in the amount of $20,372.40 along with bids for the custodial service awarded to Citywide Facility Solutions in the amount of $1,600- $168. Sorry.
So moved.
Motion made by Gary Swanson.
I'll second.
Seconded by Elizabeth McKinney. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes. Thank you, Jana.
Thank you very much.
Bye, Jana. Thank you. Thanks, Jana.
Next on our agenda is to, is number four, approved job description. Susan, if you want to walk us through?
Yes, so, we received the resignation from Mr. Hayes, our athletic director. Not to leave the school district, but he's not interested in continuing in his role as athletic director in the upcoming year. In addition to that, we have not had a chance to really develop the ELO program and- And so we haven't posted that because we haven't had an opportunity to really think that through.
And just a reminder for everyone what that stands for.
Extended learning opportunity.
Thank you.
And one of the challenges is that we're putting a budget together in September for the next year before we've even hardly opened our current school year. And of course, with COVID and all of the shifting and shifting and changes and. We just never had the opportunity to really spend time focused on that and looking at this and looking at our entire guidance program. We have guidance services, but we don't have a guidance program at the secondary level. And I think everybody feels the results of us not having a program. So what we'd like to do is to take the resources that are available, since it's this late in the hiring season, and on an interim basis, hire somebody, if we can, if we can find someone. Maybe it'd be a retiree or something like that, we were thinking. Or not, I don't know who might be out there, but to hire somebody to fill several roles in the upcoming year. And then next year, be able to make a recommendation for what makes sense. Mr. Hayes has been with us a very long time. It will be a big loss because you can't just take somebody from another school, even if they have experience and expect them to. Mr. Hayes said that he would be more than happy to mentor the person and help and support them, so it's not any. But nonetheless, there'll be a ramp up. And we want to make sure that we really are clear about what we need and all of that before we just try to fill a void without getting any due thought. So for that reason, we just wanted to let you know that we'd like to move forward with trying an interim position to address these needs that we have this year. They'd also be able to do, you know, some work we're thinking with NEOS. We've got a lot of work to do there, as you know, coordinating and transitioning staff. And so there'd be probably some other assignments, but we'd like to go ahead and be able to move forward and post because it's so late at this point in time. And see if we can't get, you know, somebody on board, you know, to help us. This would be a year-round position, so it wouldn't be somebody that would wait until, you know, we're looking at at having the person start as soon as we can. If we can't find one, as soon as they're available and then work with us in the upcoming year.
Do we know if the fall sport schedule has even begun to show up? Do we have any idea what it's going to look like?
Because I doubt it.
So that, we do need that position.
Yeah. And it needs to be more administrative, and we have a lot of new staff. But our schedule is already set for the year. You know, we just send out our programs, our schedules to the kids and everything like that. So we have our sections already in place. So, you know, taking somebody that might be interested this year at this particular point, who may be interested. I don't know if there are or they aren't, but I feel their sections at this point, just isn't practical to think about it. So Jamie said he would continue to help on the backside, but he wants nothing to do with front work facing athletics.
Did Mr. Hayes have a full teaching schedule plus being athletic director during teaching?
We have point four of Mr. Hayes' position was budgeted for athletics. But we had more sections, so once he informed of this, we were able to actually offer more sections of the courses that he teaches. But we're going to keep him point two still to help support the transition of athletics. So that he's not doing that above and beyond without the appropriate time to be able to work with the person. So I think right now he's scheduled to teach point eight and point two to help support the transition, so we don't lose our footing.
Can I ask, what type of person do you envision fulfilling these roles?
It is a unique combination of duty, certainly.
A lot of it's coordination. A lot of what the, like, what are we looking for? Somebody that certainly has a background in education and has really good organizational skills that, you know. We were thinking, you know, maybe there's a retiree. Do something like this for a year, was kind of what we were thinking. But there might be somebody else that wants to transition for a year and get some time under their belt or whatever, for whatever reason. People are trying different things because of COVID and maybe will land. I don't know who will land, but we thought, let's give this a whirl. We really don't want to fill these positions permanently without really being thoughtful and getting, these are important, you know.
Do we have?
That's what we thought.
Do we have things left over from our other ELO teacher? Like, did he weave connections?
I'm not aware of anything. So, you know, we'll give it a whirl if we don't get any applicants, but it's worth a shot. We certainly won't get somebody part-time. So we figured if we're offering full-time with benefits for a year, that might be attractive enough to get somebody. But to try to get a point four athletic director and a point five ELO without a program, it just didn't seem to make a lot of sense at this point.
I like the idea of a retiree.
And then we also have, yeah, so something like that is.
So that puts us at point seven FTE.
Well, point five plus point four is the athletic director and then.
But if Jamie's staying on point two for a year.
So if we need to, we can tap money. Right now, we don't have any coach hired, you know, for the technology integrator. And, you know, even with the NEOS stuff, as I said here, there's some of that work. If the person, depending on the person, if we can really get them to do that type of thing, we could probably tap some of the federal grant money too, because there's a correlation between learning loss and being able to have some of the work that's related to NEOS done. So we figured, well, we could probably marry it that way. But there are positions, we also, right now, struggling to find a Mandarin teacher. We've advertised over and over again. We don't have applicant, we have a couple of applicants right now because we went to the Globe. We ran an ad in the Globe because we're not getting anything.
You see Orson Harper republish theirs.
Yeah, we're struggling. So we've, now we've got two applicants that just came in this week, so we'll interview them and we'll get that. But those are tough positions to fill. And what happened with COVID is there was some feeder programs. So Brandeis has a program for Mandarin, teaching Mandarin in high schools. And they have a relationship with China, so they, you know, bring teachers that are qualified and interested and able to come from China, get their master's degree here, and then they have the opportunity to get a job. That's how we got a current one, but they didn't run the program last year because of COVID. So that puts kind of a void there. So, but we did get two applicants. I don't know if they'll work out or they won't, or if they'll advertise. I'm just saying, positions that we're struggling to fill. So the money part, I'm not, I'm not as concerned. I've got, you know, a couple of different ways that we can handle that.
Okay.
If we can't get the body, then none of that matters.
So do you see it as an administrator making?
Yes.
Okay.
This would be an administrative position, it's not a teaching position.
Okay.
ELO is not a teaching position. Neither is, neither is athletic director.
So when that set, when that package is created, is that, it's negotiations there flexing? This is how much the district's willing to pay you plus benefits?
Yeah, it would be, it would probably be in the range of your assistant principal type salary range. We wouldn't go outside of that. So full-time year-round, you know, Mr. Stefano is full-time year-round, so it's in, you know, in the range of that.
Just to, I said, I talked to our athletic director and then another one, I know it used to be athletic director, he's a teacher now. And he said most schools our size have a two-thirds position athletic director. So when, and he talked about the amount, he said, when he had to cancel a game and reschedule it, he said that was eight phone calls alone. And then he said, then if you, like, if it's boys here and girls there, there's a whole nother. So it's almost a two-third position, he said, for a school our size. Both of them said that.
That probably shows Jamie's experience, that he can do it in point four.
And when I started, he was only released point two. This year, I put in the budget, the current year, that he would be released point four. So that he'd have one block a day that he could devote to it, because he was only having one block and it was every other day. It was a red or a black day, and then what do you do on the others? So I tried to improve it for him in that way, but there's other ways that it's handled. I mean, in some school districts, they, the athletic department has a secretary to do all of that stuff. And then the athletic director is attending the meetings and doing some of the scheduling. But when, they're not dealing with the buses and stuff, here that is the case. So Jamie said he would continue to help us with that. Plus, you know, if we can get another person. If we can't, then we'll come to, we'll have to come up with another plan. But, you know, we thought, let's try to, try to do this first, see if we can attract somebody, you know. And if we can't, we'll go to another plan.
And even the stuff you talked about, does it include them attending the events? Like, a good athletic director should be attending. I personally, as a teacher, like, anytime I hear about adding another administrative position, like, I just go. All the money's going to central office, but I. The amount of responsibilities for an athletic director alone. I, I think we got away with a lot of pounds, I think.
That's why you struggle to fill the position as well, because it, and it doesn't pay anything.
Yeah.
But if you're looking at maybe a retiree, I mean, if you have to.
You don't know who might be out there, we'll give it a whirl.
Well, my concern is the ELO thing, because it's so important. And if we're starting from ground zero.
Well, you need a program, is what you need, and that's, we don't have a program.
Maybe it wasn't an official program. We had a, my son benefited from it. That's why I'm wondering if there's anything left.
No.
Ryan, I can't remember his last name, he did an incredible job. That's disheartening.
So that's what I'm saying. And there's a relation, it's part of, I think of ELO as kind of like an extension of, of like guidance, a guidance program, you know? It's extended learning opportunities. And, you know, knowing what kids are trying to have for an experience, you know, what they need to kind of develop, you know, additional skills in the areas of interest to them. You have to get to know the kids, you have to know what they're taking, you have to develop relationships. Also have to have processes in place in order to be able to do that, and forms created and all of that to get businesses to sign off if you're going to have a relationship. We have none of that. We have none of that. And so, you know, before you can really go out there and get partnerships and stuff, you're going to have to have some of the backside stuff, you know, created. So even if we hired this position on a part-time basis, you'd still have to develop that. And you really aren't going to get the benefit of the ELO until you get the program. It's like now, we have guidance, we have guidance counselors, but we don't have a guidance program. So they don't get the benefit of a program. Guidance actually has, you know, this curriculum, there's work that you do. It's not just about, you know, you know, scheduling and, you know, providing kids with opportunities to meet with colleges. It's far more than that. And so, but, you know.
And we've kind of handled it by dicing it up into millions of pieces. And obviously, we've never kept track of it, because here's a program that's, I think, will be so necessary with COVID and just catching up on learning and.
Really important. But, you know, we've got to start where we're at, you know.
Well, Susan, you have all summer.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Any more discussion on that?
I, with the ELO, this is probably a discussion for later, for next year when we start looking at the position. Is there any way we could share that position with Epping? Do you know?
Well, it's, in most school districts, it's a full-time.
Right, okay.
Used to be a full-time position here. I don't think those are the things, I think what we're looking for, if we can, and again, is for somebody to take a hard look at some of these areas and then come together with, this is what a program here would look like. And then therefore, then we can have a conversation about, okay, can we, do we have sufficient staff, but they're not deployed in the right way? You know what I mean? One of the things Dave and I, because he was coming in new, and I haven't had any time to study it in depth, was to think, well, maybe we combine, you know, combine things in a different way. But you have to really have the time to focus and look at it. So I don't think, I don't think we're anywhere near ready to say what that would look like in the long run.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So that's what that's about.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? I'm looking for a motion to approve the job description for the interim position, Assistant to the Principal.
Oh, is that the one we just did? Yes, it is.
Number four, yep.
Yes.
A motion by Elizabeth McKinney?
Second.
Second, second from Gary Swanson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So I'm sorry, I thought it was.
That's okay.
It's right in my head.
Job description is approved. Second on, no, second, fifth on our agenda is to approve the MOA revision. And do we have any additional documentation on that, Susan? Or are we just going straight through? Beautiful. We already, yep. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the MOA revision?
So motion says NTA, it says MTA.
Oh, I'm sorry, NTA, N as in Nancy.
That makes more sense. That makes a lot more sense.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Gary Swanson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes. Our final action item is to accept the fiscal year '22 wage rates for the non-union personnel. I look for a motion.
So moved.
Elizabeth McKinney motion. Do I see a second?
Second.
Second by Gary Swanson. Do we have any discussion on that?
It's the end of the school year.
Okay, there's no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes. I call, if there's no other business, the meeting.
I did actually have a few items.
Please, yes.
I'm a little confused what happened between the third and the fourth two weeks ago. Because I brought up possibly removing masks in school where kids are seated. And everybody was against it. There was no way it was going to happen. There was nine days of school left. And then all of a sudden, five o'clock, there's a survey going out. And we're removing masks for weekend sports outside, putting in air conditioners. I don't know what happened.
Was there additional guidance from the state that came down that day?
Well, even if there was, we're following CDC guidance, so. I gotta still understand what happened one day.
I'm not quite sure. The chairwoman, Kim Shelton, isn't here, and she took point on that. So unfortunately, I don't have the answers to that specific thing.
Maybe we can regroup at the next meeting.
But we can certainly talk about it at the next meeting. So you're looking at, you had made a motion on June.
Why didn't make a motion?
Just Swanson can contact the chair, that would probably, to get his questions answered.
Okay.
Would be the typical way we would handle that.
I think it should be done publicly if it's, the board's changing policies.
We're questioning June 3 motion that we.
Yeah, I can bring it up next meeting.
The way to get things on the agenda is all I'm saying, when you contact the board chair with items that would like to discuss.
I didn't think it needed to be on the agenda since it was a fairly simple, straightforward question. But do we, does summer school have a COVID plan? Is it the same COVID plan?
Summer school will follow whatever the recommendations are that we'll bring forward soon.
Oh, okay, so they haven't come, oh, okay. Oh, they're going to follow the recommendations from the committee?
Yeah.
Okay, so I wasn't sure what was going on with that.
I mean, right now, we're following until there's another approval from the board who would follow what's in place that was previously approved. So we'll have that on Tuesday evening. The task force continues to do its work, you know. We have a survey going out to parents and seek additional input of the change in guidance that we received this morning. So we're going to convene again on Monday before the parent meeting and try to tighten up what, you know, so we can share with parents where we're at with that. And then we'll bring a written recommendation to the board. Timelines are so tight here, and we've got so much going on, we just, you know.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what we were doing with, whether it was going to be next, this plan extended.
We've got a plan until there's a new one adopted. And then once somebody wants to adopt it, then we'll follow the new plan, so.
Gotcha.
If for some reason we don't get a new one adopted before summer school starts, would they remain on the current guidelines?
Well, that's our current policy, so.
Okay.
But, I mean, we're going to bring a recommendation, so.
Well, we have a deadline with the state on the 22nd, so, 23rd. 23rd.
23rd has to be with the state, so.
So.
We're working hard and, right, Andrew? I mean, we're doing everything we can to get it done. And there's a task force, and we appreciate what the parents said here this evening. But we have a task force that's looking at that, and we'll bring a recommendation. We've asked for parent input, and, you know, we. we, we all feel strongly that the stakeholder voice matters. And we've done many surveys this year and last year to try to seek to understand everybody's perspective. And we've done that again and we're-
Yeah, I just, I wasn't sure what we were doing.
Okay, that, um, that makes sense.
Then the last item, I was just wondering, there's a DOE survey going around Panorama that was posted on Facebook. Does anybody know, did we receive a survey from the-
I have a miles worth of emails I have not read upon.
I saw the survey on the Department of Education website.
Oh, okay.
That's where I saw, I saw it. I actually saw it on the news.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, it was on the news. And, um, I-
I just didn't know how legitimate it was, or?
And saw it there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just saw it on Facebook, so I was-
Yeah.
I didn't know what it was. It's, I've never heard of Panorama. I'm like-
No, I hadn't either.
What is that about?
Is that a new monkey survey? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're just trying to focus on getting the year closed, the summer schools launched, and getting our school reopening plan. And once we can get those things done, then we'll look around and see, you know, what else is being demanded of us.
Anything else? I don't wanna shut anyone off.
No, I, I mean, I think we should talk about the meeting schedule, but we can wait till Chairperson Shelton's back.
The upcoming meeting schedule?
Well, I noticed that we go from July to August. Hey, I thought it was August 22nd. Now it's August, oh, that's the retreat.
That's the retreat.
Yeah, we go to August 19th. Seems like a large jump, so.
Usually don't start until the school starts. That's the way it's always been.
Well, I know we did-
Except for last year during COVID.
Well, I know last year we voted on recessing for a few weeks.
Usually recesses in the summer. Schools aren't in without it.
Um, we can certainly talk about adding an additional meeting to the schedule at some point. I don't know if that's something we can do tonight without-
I'm not sure. I'm a little concerned, actually, with, I mean, we have an evaluation, we have renewal, we have pre, before-school, after-school care, I think we should discuss. We have the reopening plan once we get, which would probably be the 19th would probably be accurate for that. But I'm just a little concerned with, I mean, we can discuss it next meeting.
I, I think there'd be a good discussion for the July meeting on it because after this one, we have the one for Tuesday, right?
Yes, our next scheduled is Tuesday.
The 22nd.
The 22nd.
Yeah. And then as long as we make sure it gets on the agenda as a talking point. Like you.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's other items I think we should discuss too. Yeah, that's one of them, certainly.
Are you thinking you want to add a, um, meeting in between July 8th and August 19th?
Time between meetings and, yeah, I thought we should discuss it. See, although we also talked about, we tabled the matter for something until July.
We had just talked about the, um, data.
Oh, that's right, the data, yeah.
I think the reviews are all talking points.
Oh, absolutely.
I wouldn't wanna make that without her being present. I don't think that that's right for only four people to vote on adding an additional meeting until the-
No, I think he's talking about the-
For us to add something to the agenda, so it's probably talking to-
Oh, sure.
Let's talk to the chairperson, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's usually how things are done.
Um, and then, you know, if we want to talk about adding a meeting in, if we feel that's necessary, in between July 8th to, to August 19th, we can certainly talk about that.
I won't be present.
Okay.
Yeah, you guys, it's, there's a reason why we do that. I'm not canceling my vacation again this year.
Um, and so that can come up at another time. Let's just focus right now on getting ourselves through this year and, and we can talk about it again. Anything else we want to discuss before we close?
No.
I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting at 6:15.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Swanson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hammacher. Meeting is closed. Thank you, everyone.